And thank you so much, Brother Nelson, for that heartfelt prayer tonight. I want to, just wanted to emphasize, I'm praying that all of us write those names, those prayer requests that was known tonight, I want you to write those, have a piece of paper and write those names down and make a habit in your daily private prayer life to call these names out in prayer, amen. Tonight, we're gonna continue our study, this is our second week on Wednesday night in our series, The Right Appraisal, Knowing Our Self-Worth, and I pray that last week and Sunday was a blessing to those who heard the Word of God, and it is my prayer that something was said in those two messages that calls you to look at yourself differently as it relates to your identity in Jesus the Christ. Now, tonight, what I wanna do, I wanna kinda have a dialogue, a conversation, well, you know, you may talk back, you may not, but I wanna kinda talk to you tonight, and as we study, I really, this particular, in my studies, my private study, this really stood out to me, and I pray that something will be said tonight that will cause you to reflect on your identity in Jesus. Now, if you have a copy of God's Word, turn with me to Ephesians, Chapter 1, tonight, Ephesians, Chapter 1, amen, Ephesians, Chapter 1. Now, remember, last week, we looked at Ephesians 1, and we looked at, as we talk about the identity that we have, our self-worth, we looked at those spiritual blessings in the book of Ephesians, Ephesians, Chapter 1, what those spiritual blessings was, the election, the adoption, the accepted-in-the-beloved, right, the redemption through his blood and sealed with the Holy Spirit, we saw those, those spiritual blessings that we have in Jesus. But I noticed something as I was studying, I wanna bring to our attention, Ephesians, Chapter 1, and I read from the New Living tonight, Ephesians, Chapter 1, meet me at verse number 19, Ephesians, Chapter 1, verse 19, the Bible says, "I also pray that you will understand the incredible greatness of God's power for us who believe Him." I want you to notice what it says, look at verse 19, "I also pray that you will understand the incredible greatness of God's power for us who believe Him." Say it one more time, "I'm praying that you understand," watch this, "the incredible greatness of God's power for those who believe in Him." Now, the belief, the those who believe in Him are talking about those who are in Christ Jesus. Y'all follow that, those are in Christ, watch this, "This is the same mighty power that raised Christ from the dead and seated Him in the place of honor at God's right hand in the heavenly realms." Now, notice what he says, he wants us to understand this power. What power, the same power that raised Jesus up from the dead is the same power that you and I have in us, good God Almighty. I really, I need you to see the worth of that. He says, "I want you to embrace this power." What power, the power that raised Jesus up from the dead is the same power that lives inside the child of God. Oh my God, now watch what he says, verse 21, "Now He is far above," watch this, "any ruler or authority or power." Those are those, you know, we talked about that spiritual warfare, right? Anything else, not only in this world, but also the world to come, right? I need you to notice what about, the Bible says in verse 19 that Christ was raised from the dead, and watch where he was, he was seated Him, where? "In the place of honor at God's right hand in the heavenly realm." Now, tonight, what I wanna do is we talk about self-worth, I wanna talk to us from this thought and this concept, take your seat, yeah. Take your seat, can five people just put that in the comment box? Take your seat, and somebody already asked a question, I'm gonna answer that question in this, in this, in this discussion, because I believe they ask, how do you activate their power? Watch this, take your seat, take your seat, take your seat. I need you to get this, because I wanna slow down, I know I'm gonna finish tonight, but I'm getting happy just thinking about it. We have, as children of God, more power than we really think, we don't realize we have. In other words, God has given us something that's far beyond our imagination. In other words, you are so worthy in Christ that His opinion and His view of you, that He thought enough of me and you to give us power, the way He gave us power. Now, I wanna show you tonight, as we talk about self-worth, and we talk about knowing our self-work and the right appraisal, as I show you this tonight, I'm afraid, the reason many believers, whenever you find somebody who has low self-esteem or low self-worth, or has a low opinion of themselves, or feel like they're not good enough, I wanna show you tonight, they have not taken the right seat. They have not sat in the right seat, and so what I wanna show you, as we look at this, look at Ephesians 1, the Bible says that Jesus Christ, where is He seated? He is seated at the right hand of God, y'all follow that? Now, watch this, go to Ephesians, Chapter 2, Ephesians, Chapter 2, verse 1, watch what the Bible says, "Once you were dead because of your disobedience," watch this, "and your many sins, you used to live in sin, just like the rest of the world, obeying the devil, the commander of the powers in the unseen world." Watch this, "He is the Spirit at work in hearts to those who refuse to obey God. All of us used to live that way, following the passion, desires, inclination of our sinful nature, but by our very nature, we were subject to God's anger, just like everyone else." We keep reading verse 4, "But God is so rich in mercy, and He loved us so much," watch this, "that even though we were dead because of our sins, He gave us life when He raised Christ from the dead." Watch this, "It is only by God's grace that you have been saved," verse 6, "for He raised us from the dead along with Christ and seated us with Him in the heavenly realm because we are united with Jesus." Lord have mercy, take your seat tonight. I need y'all to see that, I don't know if y'all see it yet, but I've noticed in Chapter 1, Jesus has been placed and seated at the right hand of God. I know y'all see that. The very thing that they, that God said He placed Jesus at the right hand of God, because to place Him at the right hand of God, that means Jesus has authority. That means He is right next to God, as I speak right now, at the right hand of our Father. But He says, "When we obeyed the gospel of Jesus Christ, He seated us with Christ Jesus." Lord have, let me read it from a separate trail, let me read it from Ephesians 2 and 6, from the New Living, I mean, the NID. It says, "And God raised us up with Christ and seated us with Him in the heavenly realms in Christ Jesus." Let me read it from the English Standard Version, "And raised us up with Him and seated us with Him," watch this, "in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus." The New American Standard Version, watch this, "And raised us up with Him and seated us with Him in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus." Somebody gonna get in just a minute, read it from the C V version, "God raised us from death to life with Christ Jesus, and He has given us a place beside Christ in heaven." What are you pointing out, preacher, what are you saying? Notice what the text says, the text says, "Those of us who are in Christ, we are seated with Christ on the right side of God." Nobody got it yet, nobody, somebody get happy. Maybe y'all don't see what he just said, but let me tell you what he said. When kings, or priests rather, whenever priests would work in the temple, in the Old Testament, they didn't have a seat, because they would always work. Y'all connect the dots, in the Old Testament, when priests would work in the temple, they wouldn't find a seat, because they was always working. However, Hebrews 10 and 11 says, "In every priest stands daily at his service, offering pealing the same sacrifices, which can never take away sins, a priest in the temple work was never done." In other words, the Old Testament priests would always work inside the temple, because his work was never done. Jesus being a priest, He has accomplished a work, and the work He's done is finished, is over. And so, as a result, He sits at the right hand of God, because the work He has done, it is over. Maybe you don't know what work He's done, well, in John, Chapter 19, and verse number 30, the Bible says, Jesus' last words was, "It is finished." It's a Greek word that literally means, "to bring to an end." So, the term, "it is finished," in the Greek construction of that sentence, it literally means, "paid in full." Oh my God. God thought you was worthy enough that while you were still a sinner, stuff that you ain't even did yet, He loved you and I such so much that Jesus died on that cross, and while He died on that cross, when they killed Him and put nails in His hands, nails in His feet, the Bible says, Jesus, one of His last words was, "It's finished." In other words, "it's paid in full." They ain't gotta pay a dime. They can walk their way to heaven, they can't do nothing, they can't get their own merit, He says, "It's paid in full, because I put it, I did, I put it on myself." Now, and now, that's good news for some of us, so for some of us who still trying to work our way to heaven, that's good news tonight, because you don't work for the Lord, because you're trying to be saved. You work for the Lord, because you are saved. You follow that? Now, I need you to notice something, I need us to go back here, notice where Jesus is sitting. He is seated at the right hand of the Father. And the Bible says, in Ephesians 2 and 6, the Bible says, "You and I are seated there too." I got a question, church, how is it that I'm here and there at the same time? How is it, if this be true, the text says that if I'm in Christ, that means that I'm seated at the right hand of God, with Jesus? In other words, I'm just, I'm a co-heir of Jesus. So, Jesus is at the right hand of God, and because Jesus at the right hand of God, and because I'm in Christ, that means I'm also in the right hand of God, which means, how can I be on earth and in heaven at the same time? Because when you get in Christ, do you see the blessing? When you get in Christ, you have access to the Father like nobody else has access to. See, I believe we have been, we have been in this earth suit so long that we have forgotten what our worth is. And I'm here to tell you tonight, you need to take your seat, because if truth be told, if y'all wanna be honest tonight, I ain't trying to get to heaven, I'm already there. Lord have mercy, in other words, ain't no point of me trying to get to heaven, I'm already there. How you there, preacher, because I'm seated with Jesus at the right hand. What do you mean, preacher, now, watch this, now, this is interesting. The interesting thing is, watch this, y'all watch this, watch the power we have. The power that works in us, the same power that Jesus, that raised Jesus up from the dead is the same power that you and I have, same power. So, so, so I want you to notice what the text say, it didn't say you will be seated. You've already been seated. In other words, in His mind, in God's mind, you are already at the right hand of God. Somebody says, "Is it, is it, is it so being seated is not after you die?" No, ma'am, no, sir, being seated, you're already there, you are a co-heir of Jesus. You're a co-heir, see, that's why, when you have low self-worth, and you feel like you, you're not what you need to be, and you shameful, it's because you have gotten up from the seat. See, the seat is a seat of authority. Wait, wait a minute, the seat, so watch this, we'll go back to Ephesians 1 real quick, I want y'all to see this, I ain't making this up. Look at Ephesians 1, verse 19, verse 20 rather, the Bible says that, "That raised Christ from the dead," that mighty power, "raised Christ from the dead, seated Him in the place of honor at God's right hand in the heavenly realms." Now, He is far above any ruler or authority or any power or leader, anything else, not only in this world, but also in the world to come. Notice, when He got placed on the right side of God, amen. The Bible says, everything is under the feet of Jesus. Everything is under His authority, because He's at the right hand of God. Now, wait a minute, if that be true, if I'm in Christ, and Christ says, in Ephesians 2 and 6, that I'm also at the right hand of God, what does that mean for me? That means stuff that will allow to overpower us should really be under our feet, because of Jesus is at the right hand of God, and if it's under His feet, it means it's under our feet. Oh my Lord, see, see, for far too long, we have allowed stuff to have authority over us that's supposed to be under our feet. See, here's the thing, if the storm is under His feet, that mean the storm is under our feet, amen. If sickness and death is under His feet, it means sickness and death is under our feet. Don't mean you ain't gonna get sick, don't mean we ain't gonna die, but it doesn't have power over us. Do you see the power, do you see the worth you have? You are seated with Jesus Christ, right now, on the right side, on the right side, right hand of God. Right now, as I speak, there is a world going on. There is the unseen world in the heavenly realm, and this is a visible world, which we see right now, and right now, they both going on at the same time. And you don't even know your worth, and you don't even know, right now, you are seated on the right, do you know how intimate that is? To be on the right hand of God, do you know how, how much, now, let me say it another way, let me say it this way. Christ is representing us in heaven, and we are representing Christ on earth. Let me say it again, He's at the right hand of God, right now. What you doing, Jesus, I'm representing you in heaven. I'm you in heaven, right now, on the right side of God. So, since I'm in heaven, you be my body on earth. And so, while I represent you in heaven, you represent me on earth. I read in Colossians 1:18, the Bible says, "Everything is under His feet." The last I checked, feet is a part of the body. It is one of the disgusting parts of the body, the feet, but it's still a part of the body, but everything is under His feet. Lord have mercy, I wish somebody would just say, I'd just be the feet. If it can be under me, if I have authority over it, if I'm a part of the body of Christ, I just want it under my feet, and the text says that we are seated on the right. See, I need you to get there, I need you to get the right appraisal tonight. Somebody told you wrong. Somebody told you that when you sin, that you fell, you fell from grace, that's a lie. When you sin, you don't fall from grace, you fall in grace. Bless the name of Jesus, somebody told you that when you sin, you should be shamed and guilty, all of that, all this, no, 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 no. He stripped that, no, when I sin and when I offend God, I don't run from God, I run to God. I don't run from my daddy, I run to my daddy, because I understand who I am in Jesus Christ. And if God can forgive me, who are you, amen? When I ask you to forgive me, who are you not to forgive me, if He has already forgiven me? I want you to see this tonight, because I'm afraid the reason why we don't feel good about us, the reason we have bought into what folks say we were and what we can't do and all that, the reason we have bought into that, because we are out of alignment. Somebody put that in the chat box, out of alignment, don't get out of alignment, what do you mean, preacher? Wait a minute, watch this, Christ represents us in heaven, right? On earth, we supposed to represent Christ. Y'all gonna get in just a minute. In heaven, Christ represents us. On earth, we represent Christ. What do you mean, preacher, so what does that mean? That means that whenever I'm not representing Him properly on earth, I have a challenge with my own worth and my own, or what I feel about me, because I'm out of alignment. Jesus ain't out of alignment, we are out of alignment. In order, anybody know, if your back is out of alignment, you know what's gonna happen, you ain't gonna be able to walk straight. If your car is out of alignment, and you try to drive that car, that car, amen, and you let the wheel, you know it's gonna go into another lane, it's out of alignment. And I'm afraid, many of us, the reason we don't feel the power, wait a minute, the reason we don't, reason we don't, we can't access the power, the reason we get up and we feel, we get in the mirror and say, "I'm so ugly, I'm so fat, I don't know," the reason, oh, you know why, you know why that's the case? You out of alignment. No wonder you feel that way about you, because you can't see yourself the way God sees you, if you feel that. If you call yourself ugly, fat, all that, if you feel, if you feel that way about you, you must not know who you are in Jesus, Lord Jesus, because you have gotten up out of the seat. The seat says, "I'm with Christ." Do you know how much power that is? To be in, in other words, Jesus talks to the Father. He talks to God. So, when God sees me on earth, He don't see me, He see Jesus. No wonder the Bible says, "You are the body of Christ," and members in particular. Amen, when the Bible says body, He's talking about, we are supposed to be His representatives on earth. Let me say it another way, how many, let me ask this question, I've talked this stuff before, but this'll be a good time to share it again, and some of y'all haven't heard it, but how many, how many have ever, when we pray to God, and we pray to God, and we say, "In Jesus' name, I pray," anybody ever, can I see some emojis or something? When y'all pray to God, and at the end of the prayer, you will say, "In Jesus' name, I pray," amen. Anybody ever guilty of doing that? Matter of fact, in the old, in the old church, they say, "You better not close the prayer without saying, 'In Jesus' name, I pray,' because if you say, 'In Jesus' name, amen, I pray,' amen, if you don't say that, you ain't prayed, right? But, but this is what I've discovered, this is what I've discovered. Now, y'all don't get mad, I don't wanna, I ain't trying to mess nobody theology up, but let me say it, let me say it, let me say it like I feel it. There is nowhere in the Bible, nowhere, where the Bible teaches Christians that at the end of each prayer, to say, "In Jesus' name, I pray." Nowhere in the Bible, not one scripture. There is nowhere in your Bible, nowhere in your canon, those 66 books, where the Bible says, "At the end of each prayer, say, 'In Jesus' name, I pray,' amen." It never tells you to say, "In Jesus' name." Y'all alright tonight, never said that, don't, to make sure I ain't getting, I know we virtual, I'm about to throw nothing at me, amen, but it never says that. So, preacher, what you talking about? I'm afraid that we say, "In Jesus' name, I pray," but we don't pray in Jesus' name. We say, "In Jesus' name," but we don't pray in Jesus' name. Now, the Bible says, we ought to pray in Jesus' name. You never say, "Say in Jesus' name," no, nothing wrong, ain't nothing wrong with closing the prayer and saying, "In Jesus' name, I pray," as long as you know what you're talking about. I'm afraid we are out of alignment, and we, and the reason we can't access this power, and the reason we can't, we can't be what God need us to be, and the reason we don't feel good about us, and we gotta, we need validation from everybody else, we need validation from boyfriends and girlfriends and people and Facebook and Insta, we need all that validation, all because we don't know who we are. But I took the right seat. Tonight, I got the right appraisal, and I wanna show you, if you gonna be in alignment, I wanna challenge you tonight, when you pray, don't just say, "In Jesus' name, I pray," but pray in Jesus' name. Now, the question that I gotta ask tonight, amen, since we in Bible study, we gotta ask the question is, what does it means to pray in Jesus' name? Bless the name of Jesus, tonight, after tonight, after we get done tonight, before we pray, before we conclude with the benediction, you're going to know how to pray in Jesus' name, because nine times out of 10, you just been saying, "In Jesus' name," and I been praying, "In Jesus' name." Well, we gonna help you tonight to understand if you gonna access this power that the Bible talks about, that we seated at the right hand of God, we're gonna talk about, how do I pray in Jesus' name? See, we good about telling for what the Bible say, but I ain't telling what the Bible mean. Yeah, we good at quoting, book, chapter, and verse, but we gotta be able to tell for what this text, this stuff means. Now, I need you to understand something. So, praying Jesus' name simply is this, hold on, let me read, let me read a few passages, hold on, go to John 14. John 14, verses 13 and 14, John 14, verses 13 and 14. Watch what the Bible says, the Bible says, "And whatever you ask, in My name, that I will do," right? "That the Father may be glorified in the Son. If you ask anything in My name," watch this, "I will do it." Y'all got that, John 15:16, "You did not choose Me, but I chose you, appointed you that you should go and bear fruit, and that your fruit shall remain; that whatever you ask, the Father, in My name, He will give it to you." John 16:23 and 24, "And in that day, in that day, you will ask Me anything. Most assuredly, I say unto you, whatever you ask, the Father, in My name, He will give it to you, until you have asked nothing in My name, ask, and you will receive," watch this, "that your joy may be full." Now, whatever asking in His name means, notice when you asking His name, He'll give you anything you ask for, anything. When you asking in His name, He says, "What I do is, I'm gonna give it to you." But then He says, "When you ask in My name, your joy gonna be full." Now, let me tell you what it don't mean. It don't mean you can ask God for a Cadillac and He gonna give it to you, that ain't what they're talking about. Ain't talking about he asking for a house, it ain't what it's talking about, let me tell, what does it mean asking? To asking His name, watch this, wait for it, to asking His name is to say a prayer as Jesus' representative. What does that mean, preacher? That mean, whatever I ask God for, I'm asking God for the very thing that Jesus, if He was on earth, would ask God for. Y'all follow that? When I'm asking in His name, I'm only asking the request it's because I'm saying, Jesus, this is the prayer I'm asking, because if you was literally here on earth, you would ask the same thing. But since you are representing me in heaven, and I'm representing you on earth, I'm not gonna ask for nothing you yourself wouldn't ask for. See, to asking His name is not just saying, "In Jesus' name." It's when you ask in His name, you are asking, and you're saying, "I'm praying this because, God, I know this is a prayer that you would have asked for as Jesus if you was on earth." In other words, it means to pray in compliance with His character, praying just as He would pray, in order to honor His reputation and purpose in this world. Y'all got that, let me read a few words, it means to pray in compliance with His character, praying just as He would pray, in order to Praying just as he would pray in order to honor his reputation, purpose in the world. Third time's a charm. And it means to pray in compliance with his character. Praying just as he would pray in order to honor his reputation and purpose in the world. In other words, when I'm praying in Jesus' name, I'm only gonna ask God for what Jesus would ask for. And I'm afraid that's why your prayer haven't been answered yet. Because you asking God for stuff that Jesus wouldn't ask for. You want God, you, see, at that point, you out of alignment and you not even, you're not in an alignment with God. You're not even in alignment. And so what you doing, you go ask God for stuff and you say, God, give me this, but God said, how's that gonna give me honor? How does it gonna honor my reputation? How is this gonna fulfill my, my purpose for the world? How does that comply with my character? You are asking God to do stuff that's outside the character of Jesus Christ. And he ain't gonna answer those prayers. It's only the prayers that God says, I'm going to answer and give you everything in my name, as my representative, because you're asking me for stuff that I would ask for if I was on, on earth. I hope y'all get it tonight. So the next time you pray, know your worth, know who you are. Is, ask yourself, is this prayer in compliance with Jesus, with, with the Father's wheel? Is, is it complying with his Jesus character? Now, let me show you, let me show you something tonight. Uh, somebody asked the question, some examples. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you a few scriptures tonight to give you example, what to pray for. And to see what, what happens when you are a representative of him. Because that's your worth. I know who I am in Jesus. I'm at the right hand of God. And so what we do is, we say in Jesus' name, we pray, and we think that's like a miracle type of word that gonna get us pray. No. You been saying in his name, but baby, you ain't been praying in his name. You been, you been, you been just saying, you just, it just sounds good because you was taught it to say at the end of the prayer, in Jesus' name, and you don't even pray, you ain't even praying in his name. You asking him for stuff that I ain't even applying. You asking him for stuff that keep you away from him. And then we get mad when he don't give it to us. Amen. That's why, that's why when you, when you're sick and when you are afflicted and you dealing with stuff in your life, when you ask God to heal your body and ask God to see you through some stuff, say, God, I'm, I'm asking you this for, for, for kingdom purposes, God. If you do this, God, amen, I wanna be able to be beneficial to the kingdom. Now, why would God heal you and you ain't gonna be beneficial to the kingdom? Why would God give you the financial breakthrough if it's not gonna benefit the kingdom? So I'm praying a prayer. I'm praying the prayer as I'm, as a representative of Jesus Christ. Go with me real quickly to John chapter fifteen, five, John chapter five. John chapter five. Let me show you something. Am I making sense tonight? And I don't see some of the questions. Some people are asking questions. I gotta go back and look at them. Uh, if y'all don't mind, those who do, uh, do, do some more questions, send them to Sister Carter. And this is a card I sent them to me at the end, so I can make sure I get all the questions. Uh, so please send, send it to Sister Carter and she'll send them to me. Um, John chapter five, John chapter five. Watch this. Now remember, now remember what we're talking about. Sitting at the right, taking the right seat, right? Sitting at the right hand of God. We are with, we are right now at the right hand of God. We are in the heavenly realm right now. I know you don't feel it, but you there. You're there. Cause Jesus there. I'm in Jesus and Jesus there. Now, if you believe Jesus is there and don't believe you there, that's inconsistent with the word. Cause the word says, if you in Jesus, you there. Jesus is representing you in the heavenly realm. Amen. He's representing you there. We are supposed to represent him on earth. Now, what happens, this power that God talk about, they raise over, the reason we don't know how this power work is because we out of alignment. And when you get out of alignment, it ain't gonna work. You, you're not even in alignment with the wheel. So watch this, John chapter five. I wanna show you something. John chapter five, verses sixteen through nineteen. Let me read it from the New Living Translation. And I'm gonna show you in this, in this chapter, I wanna show you how Jesus, how he imitates the Father. Notice, notice what Jesus does. The Bible says, so the Jewish leaders began harassing Jesus for breaking the Sabbath rules. But watch this. But Jesus replied, my Father is always working. Watch this, and so am I. So the Jewish leaders tried all the hard to find a way to kill him. For he not only broke the Sabbath, he called God his Father. Thereby making himself equal with God. Watch this. So Jesus is playing. I tell you the truth. The son of man can do nothing by himself. He does, does not only what he sees the Father's doing, but whatever the Father does, the son also does. And you should notice, number one, notice what? He imitates the Father. Jesus says, as my representative, if you gonna represent me on earth, are you imitating the Father? Because Jesus said, listen, whatever the Father do, I do. Whatever he does, I do. I'm gonna imitate him. We, we pray to God and ask God for stuff and want God to, and, and we'll say, in Jesus' name, and we're not even, we're not even a good representative of Jesus. That's why the prayer won't go through. You a bad representative. You're not, he said, Jesus says, I'm imitating the Father. And because I'm an imitator of the Father, he says, whatever the Father does, I do. What if the saints had the same mentality? What if we say, because God is a grace giver, I'm gonna be a grace giver. Because God forgives, I too will forgive. Because God is merciful, I too will be merciful. Y'all follow that? In other words, Jesus says, I'm gonna imitate the Father. My question tonight, are you a representative of the one you seated with? Now, you're supposed to represent Jesus on earth as he represents you in heaven, but you a bad imitator. You a bad imitator and you don't imitate the Father, but yet you want him to do everything for you when you a bad representative. You don't even represent him well. You want, you, you, you ask for cars, creeps and cash, bless the name of Jesus. But you, but your life is not in alignment with his. Oh. Number two, not only, not only, watch this, watch the example we see. Jesus imitated the Father, but number two, Jesus was secured in the Father's love. Look at John twenty. It says, twenty, uh, verse twenty, uh, the, the eight, eight clause of that. The Bible says, for the Father loves the son, and shows him everything he is doing. I love that. Because Jesus says, I am secure in the Father's love. Do you not know that people who are out of alignment with God and they struggle with folk not loving them have not really embraced, have not truly yet embraced the love of God on their life? Then although I can't see God, although I, I, although I can't touch God, I can't smell God, I am secure of the Father's love. I'm like Jesus and I'm secure of the fact that he loves me. See, I want you to notice the example of being a good representative. If you gonna be a good representative, bless the name of Jesus, you gonna be a good representative, imitate the Father. If you're gonna be a good representative, you gotta be secure in the Father's love. Right? But watch, watch the B clause of verse twenty. Uh, three, Jesus trusted in his Father. Watch verse, verse twenty in the B clause. In fact, the Father will show him how to do even the greater works than healing this man. Then you would truly be astonished. What does Jesus say? Jesus say, listen. I'm, Jesus says, I'm gonna heal this man, but the Father gonna show you, show you greater things through me. There was no doubt in Jesus' mind that the Father was not going to accomplish everything the Father said he was going to accomplish. In other words, you would never find Jesus doubting the Father. Because Jesus knew and understand that if the Father said it, it was gonna happen. I, I, I'm, I'm longing tonight where we embrace the power that we have in Jesus. I'm longing tonight that we'll know our worth and know that if we imitate the Father, if we're secured in his love, that we can trust the Father. I wanna be a good representative of Jesus, good representative. Not only that, but look at verse, look at verse thirty. Drop down to verse thirty. I wanna show you, Jesus lived for his Father's will. Watch this, verse thirty. The Bible says, I can do nothing on my own. Watch this. I judge as God tells me. Therefore, my judgment is just, why? Because I carry out the will of the one who sent me, not my own will. Wait a minute, Jesus. Jesus says, my whole purpose is to carry out the Father's will. Jesus says, I know I'm equal with God in the, in the Godhead, but it ain't even about me. Whatever the Father will was, I was gonna yield to his will. Wouldn't it be something if we the representatives of Jesus? Wouldn't it be something that we'll be the same, have the same mentality that God, not my will, but your will? I may not like it, it may hurt, but God, I'm submitting to your will. And because it's your will, it ain't even about me. If you don't want me to have the job, God, so be it. Bless the name. God, if you don't, if you don't give me the guarantee on the house, I can't get the house, I'm okay with that. Because what I'm trying, what I wanna do, God, I want to be okay with the will of God and sometimes the will of God hurt. Sometimes the will of God brings pain, but ain't nothing like submitting to the will of God. Sometimes your want will be greater than God's will. But when your want is greater than God's will, you say, God, you know more than me, so I'm gonna submit to your will, although I want this, I want. Have you ever wanted something real bad? And but you wanted it and you say, God, listen, if this ain't what you want me to have, God, I'll submit to it, even if I gotta cry, even if I gotta walk away in tears. I know, God, you got something better for. So I want you to notice something. Notice, notice, notice those, notice those, those factors. Those, those examples about Jesus. Jesus imitated the Father. Jesus was secured in the Father's love. Jesus trusted in the Father. Jesus lives for the Father's will, but watch this last one. Jesus only need validation from the Father. Oh my God. When you know your worth, when you know who you are in, in Jesus Christ, the right appraisal says, the only validation I need is from my Father. Watch what the Bible says in verse number thirty-one through thirty-seven of John five. The Bible says, if I were to testify on my own behalf, my testimony would not be valid. So Jesus said, if I even said something good, it wouldn't even be valid. Watch this. But someone else is also testified about me and I assure you that everything he says about me is true. In fact, you sent investigators to listen to John the Baptist and his testimony about me was true. Of course, I have no need of human witness. In other words, it don't even matter what folk think. But I say to these things, so that you might be saved, John was like a burning and shining lamp and you were excited for a while about his message. Watch this. But I have a greater witness than John, my teaching and my miracles. Watch this. The Father gave me these works to accomplish and they prove that he sent me and the Father who sent me has testified about me himself. Jesus, what are you showing me? I'm showing you, I only need validation from the Father. Now, let's connect these dots. Ephesians one, Jesus been raised up, risen up, and he's at the right hand of the Father. He has all authority like a king. Ephesians two says, you was once dead. Now you are in Christ. I have seated you with Jesus Christ on the right hand of God. I've seated you there, right? So that means you're co-heirs with Jesus. That means the same rights Jesus had you had. But because I'm a representative of, in heaven for you, I need you to be a representative of me on earth. Our struggle becomes when we come out of alignment. It becomes when we say we are kingdom citizens, but we operate in our own merit or what we wanna do. And we will come out of alignment. We don't imitate the Father. We're not secured in his love. We don't trust him. We seek validation from everybody. You not a good representative. And then you turn around and pray to God and say, God, God, please give me the house in Jesus' name. But you been a bad rep, this the first time you talk to him. I mean, in other words, some of us only talk to him when it's a nine-one-one. There's no intimacy. There is no connection. Amen. And, and he says, if you gonna represent me in my name, if you gonna, I wanna know, the, let me ask you a question, church. The last prayer you prayed, wherever their prayer was, their private prayer, their prayer that nobody else knows about, their private prayer, when you prayed, ask yourself, is this a prayer Jesus would have prayed for? Now, if your answer is no, why you praying the prayer? Why are you praying a prayer that Jesus wouldn't pray for? I can tell you why. Your want. It's your want, it ain't his will. So you can't access, you can't access this power because you out of alignment. You feel bad about who you are because you really have not taken the seat. You don't even know who you are in Jesus. So as a result, you can't embrace this, 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 this power that you have. I mean, you possess it, it's yours. But be, all because you out of alignment and you have not taken the seat. You don't see it. Let me show you something. Go to Ephesians three. Ephesians three, um, and we quote this all the time. But hopefully they bring a new, a new meaning tonight. Ephesians three. Look at verse fourteen, Ephesians three, fourteen. The Bible says, when I think all of this, I fall to my knees and pray to the Father. So watch what Paul says. Paul says, all the stuff that he talked about, about these spiritual blessings, about, about all the stuff that he put inside of us, all this power. He says, when I, I fall to my knees, the cradle, everything in the heaven and earth, verse sixteen. I pray that from these glorious, unlimited resources, he will empower you with inner strength through the Spirit. Then Christ will make his home in your heart as you trust in him. Your roots will grow down into God's love and keep you strong. Verse eighteen. And may you have the power to understand as all God people should, how wide, how long, how high, how deep is his love? Paul says, I'm praying that you understand. What, what, what you saying about? Paul said, they ain't giving it. You have been on earth so long and you been in this earth so, so long, you really think you are a person, a citizen of this world. You been here too long. I'm here to tell you, he's praying that you understand. Watch verse nineteen. May you experience the love of Christ for it is too great to understand fully. We know even on, even tonight, as I preach and as I talk, we still don't fully understand it. Then you may be made complete with all fullness of life and, and power that comes from God. Now, verse twenty. Now unto him who's able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that you ask or think according to what? The power that worketh in us. Do you see who you are in Jesus? Man, you got some power tonight. The power we have, the power we really, if we really knew the power. Man, listen. I can pray to God. Listen, I'm so confident in my prayer life cause I'm at the right hand of the Father. I ain't like, I'm not like the center man. I'm at the right hand. I can talk to him directly. I can talk to the Father because I'm at the right hand. And Jesus is my advocate. He at the right hand of the Father. He says, and Jesus is weighing in, telling the Father, can you, I, I, listen, I'm talking down there. That's me talking down there. Amen. I'm so happy when he looks at me, he ain't looking at Trey Beard, he looking at his son, Jesus on earth, cause I'm his representative. What are you saying tonight, preacher? I'm saying tonight, I want y'all to get this tonight. I wanna, I'm on, I want you to get it. I want you to know your worth. Your prayer, your prayer life is one of the greatest things, spiritual blessings that you have in Jesus. Your prayer life, you, 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 you being able to talk to God tonight is one. It ain't just about you just mummeling a prayer and trying to be poetic and quote scriptures. No. It is you embracing this prayer, this, this special privilege you got and this power because you know your value, you know who you are. Oh, you ought to know you gonna get a prayer through. No, don't think, I know I'm gonna get it through. It ain't gonna be bouncing off the ceiling. No, I know I'm getting one through because I've learned to submit myself to, I've learned to yield to his will. And sometime, listen, God says no sometimes. And sometime, listen, God says no sometimes. Y'all do know God don't always says yes. He says no sometime, but I've learned that even in the no, the no is a blessing too. I think, I've learned in Christ, I thank God for the closed doors, just like I thank him for the open doors. Because the closed doors, he says, "I, listen, if, if I'm his representative, he ain't gonna let what happened to me, he gonna let it happen to me. If it's something bad, he ain't gonna let, he gonna let me get it if it's bad for me anyway." He says, "What, I would not withhold anything good from those of mine." He gonna hold it, anything that's good for you, he gonna hold it from. Now, if you, if God would hold it from, guess what that mean? It ain't good. The Bible said, the Bible says, if, he says, he says, and I believe in Matthew, Jesus said, "You being, you being a father, you being evil, know how to give your children good things." And God said, "I'm the Father." He says, "If you a father and your little son or daughter says, 'Daddy, mama, give me some bread,'" "would you give him a rattlesnake?" No, you wouldn't. You ain't gonna give him a rattlesnake. They, you, they, you ain't gonna do that because you love your children. But here's the, here's the interesting thing. Sometimes we pray to God and we think we asking for bread, but we asking for snakes. And God said, "No, it ain't getting that." They think it's, they think it's, they think it's bread, but it's a snake. And you gonna find out ten years from now, the very thing that you were asking for, you say, "Oh, that's why God didn't give it to me." God didn't give it to me because it wasn't for me. I thought I was asking for bread when I was asking for a snake. See, a father always know what's best for his children. And so tonight, what I want you to do, I want you to embrace the concept, embrace this concept, not being out of alignment with God, not being out of alignment. Anybody got questions tonight? Any questions tonight? I'm gonna go back and try to find some of these questions. They was coming as I was talking. Let me see. Uh, I'm John Reed. I feel this series and messages for me. I have been really been struggling with self-work for a few years now. I've been asking for God to help and guidance. I feel I'm truly out of alignment. I'm truly struggling with fighting against depression and negative mindset. So thank you for this. God bless you. Uh, uh, what does it mean? Uh, okay, okay, no, that's, okay, uh... Let me see, I was... I feel like I'm missing somebody's question. Uh, if you have a question, unmute yourself and ask, uh, I need, I can't find it if you ask that. I may, I really wanna make sure I answer people's question when they ask. So please, 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 if you have a question that I didn't answer through, through the study, please, 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 please ask. Any questions, any questions? Bless you tonight. Bless you tonight. Listen, I want, I, I'm gonna encourage you to, to study the book of Ephesians. Uh, it's a wonderful book. Chapter one to chapter two is amazing. Because chapter one to chapter two, it suggests something so wonderful, so amazing about what we have in Jesus and the connection and the intimacy. We really don't, we really have not grasped yet. I don't think it's the people of God, our intimacy. And if you don't learn anything else tonight, it oughta help your prayer life. So tonight, um, when you pray, I want you to be mindful of your prayers from this day forth. Don't pray prayers that Jesus wouldn't pray from this day forth. If Jesus wouldn't pray the prayer, you shouldn't pray it. Cause he ain't gonna answer that prayer. If it's, if you pray anything as his representative, he'll answer it. He'll say yes to it. Because he wants you to pray prayers that would align with his character. Wants you to pray prayers that it would give honor to his reputation. Right? It would bring some type of substance in the world or in the kingdom. But if it ain't doing that, then you praying a prayer and you say, "God, answer my prayer." Yeah, he did. He just said no to it because you out of alignment. Somebody say, "I need to take my seat." I'm gonna get back in alignment. And if you struggle tonight and you're here tonight and, uh, you a person who beat up on yourself real bad, you can't forgive yourself, you still talking about what you did twenty years ago, ten years ago. You still talking about it. You say, "I can't forgive myself." Why? Why you can't forgive yourself? Because of God forgave you. Why you can't forgive you? And if you can't forgive you, then you're saying you're more powerful than God. Because if he's divine and you dust and dust can't forgive yourself, but divine can, you are, that's a slap in the face to God. So why you can't forgive yourself? Why you still talking about, "I'm ugly, I'm this, I'm..." No, why do you keep talking to yourself like? It's self-talk like that, that the devil keep chains on. And you can't walk in your work. You can't walk. There, there are, there are men, there are men and women who are in a relationship with people right now because of their self-work. They, you with somebody because you don't wanna be alone. You with somebody just because they tell you, "You pretty every day." They tell you, "Smell good every day." And you wanna hear them say it because nobody ever told you in life, and you got mama issues and daddy issues. And because you didn't get that, now you need somebody to fulfill that. And so now you let a joker, you let a giant, you let them be in your world and it's taking the strength out of you. And you don't realize you have devalued yourself. When God says you're here, you devalue yourself. And you begin to accept anything. I'm, I'm, I'm here to free you tonight. You need to be freed tonight. Listen. Know your worth in Jesus. I'm worthy. This ain't just preacher talk either, y'all. I'm talking for real. This is, know your worth in Jesus Christ. Amen. I, I, I really, I want, I want us to grasp this and I'm trying, I'm gonna let y'all go. I want y'all to grab because somebody need to hear it tonight. Somebody struggling. Man, you struggling. Man, you feel like you gotta be in a relationship? You can't even be alone. You jump from this relationship to that relationship because you afraid to be alone. You afraid to be alone. So you in and out. Men and women do it. You in and out of relationship because you have not learned to know who you are. You don't even know you. You don't know yourself. And when you don't know you, you will let some joker or some woman tell you who you are. And you will change everything just so they can tell you who they are, so they can feel good while they with you. No ma'am, no sir. I know who I am in Jesus. And when you know who you are, I know I worth it. Not because of me, but because of my identity. My identity is in Jesus. My, that's why I mentioned. Anybody have questions? I'm gonna close tonight. I keep talking. Anybody have questions tonight? We close tonight. It is my prayer that something will say tonight that will bless your life in a mighty, mighty way that it will help you in your walk with, with the Lord. It is my prayer that, that as we continue this study for the next few weeks, that you will invite somebody, you encourage somebody and tell somebody uh, that, "Listen, we want you to come, we want you to be a part of because we wanna help somebody else take the seat." We are, if you seated in the right seat, you need to help somebody else. Cause there are some people out that have a, hold the wrong appraisal and they not even sitting in the right seat. You need to get them in the right seat. And that's what our purpose is as we teach and preach the gospel of Jesus the Christ.